Good afternoon, everyone. Today is May fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. It's one P. M., and this is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protem Kentomi.
Here.
Councilwoman Frithworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
Here.
Councilman Montoya.
I'm still here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And Councilmember Rusing.
Present.
All are present. All right. Our first item today is a presentation and discussion regarding utility and nonutility development impact fees, land use assumptions, and infrastructure improvement plans. We do have a presenter that Mark's going to be introducing that is participating remotely due to a family emergency. So if we could allow him to conduct his presentation, go through his slides, and then hold off questions until he has concluded his portion of the presentation, that would be greatly appreciated.
Thank you, Sarah. Yes, today we're going to be looking at impact fees, and then we're going to be looking at water and wastewater rates. Raftellus is a consulting company that we use for these studies, and staff has been working with them since September of two thousand and twenty-three, putting this study together. It's quite time-consuming, data-driven process, and there's a long statutory requirement for the process in Arizona state law. The first item on the agenda is the impact fees. We'll be looking at the nonutilities, which will be police, fire, and streets first. And Todd Cristiano, hey, I did it, is the consultant from Raftellus doing that, and he's the one who will be remote because of a family emergency.
Councilmember Rusing has a comment.
I just have one question as we're starting off. When was the last time these fees were looked at?
We look at them every five years.
Every, so it's been five years?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And it's a year-long process, more than a year-long process when we look at it. So with that, let's see if we can get Todd up here on the screen. I will tip my hat to the I. T. People in the corner. And there we go. Todd, can you hear us?
I can hear you loud and clear.
Awesome. Can you, can you, is your PowerPoint is not up yet?
Yes, let me pull that up here, make sure I've got all my, let's see here, there we go. Hopefully you can see that. Excellent, excellent. Well, good afternoon, Mayor, members of council. It's a pleasure to be here today. Appreciate accommodating me. The family emergency has kind of, kind of calmed down, so I think we're out of the woods, but I do appreciate you accommodating me. It's, it means a lot. Today, my presentation is a summary of the study that we've conducted for the nonutility impact fees, and I'm going to walk you through some of the high-level things, but we're going to dive down into some of the details as well, just to give you some context on the, the calculation of the fees and how the numbers are, are put together. So we'll kind of step down to the little details, but otherwise, we'll keep this at a summary level to show you the, the important components of this study. Our agenda today, we'll talk about the legislative requirements and the basic methodologies that we'll be using, and then we'll go into, straight into the fee, the fees, streets, police, and fire. And please stop me if you have any questions as we go along. So the legislative process, we have to, there's an adoption process for both land use assumptions, which is kind of the data that drives developing the fees, and then the actual calculation of the fees and presenting that. Some of the requirements in the land use assumptions and the infrastructure improvement plan requirements are getting the assumptions and all the service units. We have to look at population, we have to look at jobs and square footage of commercial space being added, people per household, the growth in the area, the number of transportation trips taken by, by the citizens within the service area. All those sorts of things need to come together, and the interesting part is all of those bits and pieces of information all come from different sources. So it can be, can be quite challenging, and there's a lot of assumptions going, and that's why I've got some illustrated calculations on how that works together. Level of service, too, this is extremely important with the fees, because we need to design these fees for new, new connectors, new development, to be based on the same level of service that you're providing today for those facilities. So if we think about parks, and I know parks is not one of the fees, but if you have a park that's an acre in size, and you have three hundred square feet of, of playground equipment, we can't expect a developer or new connector to come in and pay for a level of service where there's a thousand square feet of playground equipment on an acre lot. So we have to look to develop based on the current level of service for each police, fire, and, and streets. And so some of the level of service metrics that we look at are the square feet of facilities, or the vehicles per person, or the square feet of facilities and the vehicles per vehicle trip for nonresidential. So what that is saying basically is for police and fire, we have two different types of costs that are making up the fee. One of them is the buildings, the facilities, the firehouse, and, and that sort of thing, and then the vehicles. Fire vehicles are, you know, very expensive, police vehicles can be very expensive, and police also has the buildings and things that you need to, you need to recover impact fee revenue from. So those both require developing level of service metrics based on the square footage of facilities per person in the community, or vehicles per person. So it's a level of service there, and we can't build our impact fees to, to where we provide a higher level of service than what we currently are doing. And for transportation, that last bullet shows lane miles or intersections per vehicle miles traveled. That's simply saying the number of vehicles traveling over the city of Prescott's roads, and what's that capacity. We want to make sure that we maintain the same level of service. For transportation, the levels of service are A, B, C, D.
You, one of our council members has a question. Councilmember.
Sure.
Thank you. I just wanted to expound on the level of service concept. So what you're saying is we can't require a developer of, of a new development to increase, like, say, have better playground equipment than what is already in the older developments, but
That is correct.
If he wants to, out of the kindness of his heart, if he wants to make those improvements, he can, like, for example, the Hilton Garden Inn, out of the kindness of their heart and being community stakeholders, they went ahead and helped out with the splash pad, which they didn't have to do. Isn't that correct?
As far as that's a practice or policy that's allowable, because they're willing to do that, I wouldn't see that as being a, a problem. They're not required to, based on the statute and the common, the industry standard practices that we use in Arizona. But I imagine if they did want to contribute additional level of service, I would think that would be warranted. I'm not sure whether the city has a certain practice on, to accept that or not, but if it's, as long as it's meeting the requirement of the impact fee first, anything above and beyond, I think, would certainly be up to the discretion of the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, good question. Thank you. All right. So we've got this level of service metrics, and that's really what's bounding us on developing the fees. It kind of keeps us centered in terms of developing a fee that's too high, that recovers this, you know, a lot more vehicles per, for less people and that sort of thing. So keeping that in mind, we also have this legislative process in terms of the, the timeline here, and I won't go through all the days here because we're kind of working through that. Now, you may have gone through that in the past, but there are a number of, of touchpoints along the, along the process, and you can see that we have this start, number of days of sixty days between we publish documents, and there's a minimum of thirty days to sixty days before there's a decision by elected officials, which would be the council, and then we show the development fees, the actual calculations, and we have thirty days to publish land use assumptions and the proposed fees, and then there's that, that gap of thirty to sixty days for a decision by elected officials, and then so on and so forth. The minimum days for this whole process start to finish is two hundred and twenty-five days, and I believe we have our schedule set up to, to meet that, and you can certainly extend that if you like, and we've, we've designed our fees, been working with staff to maintain that, that schedule as well. Here's the specific schedule for the city that we've lined out, and, and I'll ask Mark, Mark or Lars, if I'm missing something here, but we have everything here from the public notice, which we've already done for doing the infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumptions. That's been completed. May fourteenth, we're doing that today right now, a study session for the impact fees. And May twenty-eighth, we'll be hearing on the infrastructure improvement plan and land use assumption at council meeting. We have another workshop July ninth, ninth, to talk about the development impact fees, the actual calculations and the numbers. And then on July ninth, also, we have the adoption of the I. I. P. And land use assumptions, and adopting a notice of intent. So there's quite a few steps along the way here to allow for input from others. And then August twenty-seventh, there's a number of public hearing on the impact fees, and then finally, the, the adoption of which fees you want to adopt on October eighth, with the intent of having the fees in effect January first, two thousand and twenty-five. So still have a number of steps to go. We're kind of in the first part of the, the public portion of this, so we will, I will be working with staff as we go along on these, these other dates. So there's some industry-accepted development impact evaluation methodologies, and I'll tell you that these methodologies are the same one that Andrew's going to talk about with the three different, three different types of calculating. One's called cost recovery, or historical, or even the way maybe Andrew might talk about is the buy-in method, which is you've already built facilities that have capacity, and the new connectors or new development coming in is buying into that existing capacity, because you have someone in the past has overbuilt, or there's been available capacity available, and new development's buying into that existing capacity. The incremental expansion is, is probably more appropriate for nonutility impact fees, just because of this whole level of service concept. And basically, we base the fees based on what is the current level of service for the different fee areas, police, fire, and streets. What is that current level of service? What is that square feet of facilities per person? What is that number of vehicles per person? And then we look at, well, what are the costs associated with building the next increment of that square footage, the next increment of vehicle? And that's how we come up with the fees for incremental expansion. And that's actually what we're using for the police and fire, and I'll show you a little calculation of kind of how that was all put together. Finally, the plan base is really future-based, meaning you're at capacity with your existing facilities or system, and transportation would be a good example, and that you have some future projects that are going to be adding capacity for the system. And that's the plan base, and actually, we're doing that for transportation. So now we have our land use assumptions, and this is one of the start of the many metrics or assumptions that go in here. We have to look at the population over the ten-year period, two thousand and twenty-fourth, two thousand and thirty-three. We know there's about an annual one point five percent annual growth rate, and that's from the C. Y. M. P. O., which is the Yavapah County Transportation Update for two thousand and forty-five. It gets published every five years, and we, we gather that information from, from that document. So that means we're adding about a population of seven thousand, six hundred residents. We have housing units. We're going to increase about thirty-eight hundred, and we've looked at, well, we have to convert people to people per household. We're using about two people per household, based on U. S. Census data, quick facts, so we're adding that in. We have jobs, and the current jobs in two thousand and twenty-four is twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-seven, and this is the Census Bureau on the Map Database. This is, the Census Bureau publishes every, every two years, I believe, data on the number of jobs in a certain area, demographic area, that they track, and they track the number of jobs, the type of jobs, and the growth since the last period. So we use that information from on-the-map database, and I've actually got a picture of the on-the-map database to show you in terms of commuters in and out of the, in and out of the city. And finally, from the jobs, we're able to generate the number of nonresidential square feet that's going to be added, because there is a metric that allows us to convert the number of jobs to square footage by a metric of jobs per square foot. That information comes from the Trans, National Transportation Institute of Transportation Engineers. So there's a lot of data here from different sources. A lot of it does come from the census data, which is good, because that's repeatable, and it's fairly consistent each time you do these studies. So let's dive into streets. We talked about the assumptions. We've talked about the components of level of service, so let's walk through the streets, L. U. A. and I. I. P. So our assumptions here, what we're looking at is the I. I. P. Projects for the ten-year study period. Now, yes.
Take your break here. We have a question from Councilwoman Frithworth.
Sure.
Question for you, Todd. The, going back to slide six, the nonresidential square feet, could you help me understand the two thousand and twenty-four, the, what looks like eight thousand and ninety, is that like around eight million square feet? How do I think about these numbers?
You're exactly right. I believe that's eight million ninety. We've been working in thousands, so when we put that down, we, we kind of automatically convert that in our heads, so it should be probably eight million, ninety thousand.
Eight million. And so we'll be adding a little over a million, so we're going to be like ten, nine, ten million.
Yes.
In ten years. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Todd, this is very informative, but I have a question. You know, we have a one percent dedicated road streets tax. How is that figured into this, your calculations?
I'm going, let me go, let me get through the I. I. P., and I think the streets I. P. That might help answer the question. I might have Lars step in to help with that, with the way that we developed the growth-related portion.
Okay, thank you.
Of the streets that will be part of the impact fee, and.
Todd, I have another comment on it. I'm on the Executive Committee of Simpo, so I know where their assumptions for their population growth projections are. It's almost exclusively tied to census data. And the thing about Prescott is that we have a very substantial number of tourists, and many people that have second homes up here that don't identify Prescott as their primary location of residence. So they don't show up on the census data, but obviously, they have a big impact on the amount of vehicles, impact on roads, and to be able to project our needs based upon a large number of second homeowners in the area is an appropriate increase in your assumptions of population growth.
Understood. Understood.
So I think rather than one point five, you should probably be up around two point two or two point three.
Okay. Well, we can go back and, and look at that, too, if you'd like, and double-check the basis for that one point five, and, and see what is being included, whether that, which you mentioned, has, is, is part of that, but we'll go back and, and double-check that and see how that will, how that might impact the fees. Okay. Any other questions so far on the land use assumptions? Okay, great, great. Street assumptions. So the I. I. P. Projects. We're only including the growth-related share for the ten-year study period. We know that there's a lot of capital projects associated with transportation over the next ten years, but a lot of them are not growth-related. They're repair and replacement, or they're even outside the service area in which we're looking, in which is the city of Prescott. And so we have to kind of shave those off and look at just the growth-related components of that. Currently, some current stats, we have about a hundred and one point four lane miles of arterials, and we have about fourteen major intersections. And so arterials are the busier roads, if you will. They have two or more lanes which connect to other cities through a major arterial. That's kind of the definition. So we don't look at what's called collector mains, collector mains, which are the smaller streets that go through neighborhoods and things. We're looking at more of the backbone facilities or backbone components of, of the streets' network within the city, and that's common with, with impact fees. So the current level of service is one point three three lane miles per ten thousand vehicle miles traveled. Now, the vehicle miles traveled is the number of vehicles that pass over one, that travel one mile of the system. So we look, we add up all the V. M. T. Over the study period for those that are all traveling on your roads. But what's important here is we have this metric that we need to maintain, and we have point one eight intersections per ten thousand V. M. T. And V. M. T., again, is vehicle miles traveled. And we get this vehicle miles traveled from looking at, well, what are the types of trips people are taking, residents are taking? And there's all different types of trips, and there's what's called pass-by trips, so people that are going from point A to point B, but they decide to stop at the convenience store. So how does that trip calculate it? Do we reduce that as a, as a half a trip? So we look at the number of trips that are taken, and we also use the I. T. E. Or the Institute of Transportation Engineers document to look at what are the typical trips and things you would see from different types of establishments, an office park, a convenience store, a car wash, and that sort of thing. So we were able to tabulate the number of vehicle trips for the service area, convert that to vehicle miles traveled, the number of miles associated with that. And so you'll see that in a calculation. It's a fairly detailed calculation, and I won't go into the specifics of it, but I'll show you how the V. M. T. And everything kind of works together with all these other metrics that we have. And so we're only, again, including the city portion of the growth-related arterials. So we're not asking development to pay for an arterial improvement or expansion that's outside the service area. And again, the, the regional growth, we're not incorporating those costs in there. So quite a few assumptions there. So the components of the street fee are, we have to consider the residential population growth, the nonresidual growth in jobs and square footage of building space.
Councilmember Rusing has a question.
Yes.
Todd, for the sake of clarity, could you describe exactly what a lane mile is? Because I understand a lane mile is just one lane of a two, two-lane street, so you would actually double it when you.
Right.
Think of a road.
It's, if you took all the miles of mains both ways and stacked them end to end, that's what that would be, a hundred and one lane miles. So one lane is, one, one lane going one mile is one lane mile, and so you have to think about, you know, back and forth. So you'd have, you'd have to double that. So if you were to take all of your, all your arterials and stack each lane end to end, it would add to a hundred and one point four lane miles. Does that, does that make sense?
Thank you.
Okay. Thought maybe I lost everybody then. We have to look at the projected number of adjusted residential and nonresidential trips that are taken. When I talk about adjusted, it's just what I mentioned earlier about that sometimes the, your primary trip, you have a, a quick stop somewhere to a convenience store or somewhere else getting to your final destination. So we have to adjust for that trip. We have to adjust for that length. And again, there's, there's the Institute of Transportation Engineers provides information on, on how to develop the number of trips, number of pass-by trips, and the, the average length of those trips, and obviously, the projected number of vehicle miles traveled. We have the I. I. P. That should say new lanes, not new lands. We have the capacity and land, lane miles we're adding, and the cost per vehicle miles traveled that we're adding over the study period. We saw that, we saw that we are converting the, this, the number of square feet footage and jobs, and being able to convert that to a V. M. T. as long as, as well as with the, the population. So again, a, a lot of variables going into this. So if you look at this equation here, it's, it's a little complex. The fees are the dollars per V. M. T. Times the trip ends for a particular class or land use, residential, for example, times a trip, trip adjustment, considering the number of trips, but some trips that are not, that might be pass-by trips or intermediate trips to the convenience store or something. What's the average trip length taken by a resident? And then the trip length adjustment, which recognizes that, recognizes the, the size of the city and the number of lane miles you have. So at the end of the day, a lot of components going into the calculation of the fee. And again, we're using the Institute of Transportation Engineers data, we're using census data, and even on-the-map data to put this all together. And the, the calculations will all be detailed in the report, obviously.
Yeah, Todd, I have another question. How, how do you generate these vehicle mile travel? I mean, if you have a small community that has no significant tourism or second homes and things like that, you can probably look at registered vehicles and then project average use and things like that. But again, you know, the vast number of tourists and weekend visitors and second home users would generate a heck of a lot more vehicle miles traveled in our community than, than another one.
It's true. That's true. So the way we developed the vehicle miles traveled is we haven't really considered the, the tourist component of it, but the way this works is we're able to determine the number of trips taken by each of these, to these different locations. We have residential trips from their home, we have residential trips to the office, and, and that sort of thing, retail and things. So we're able to generate the number of trips. We know we're able to generate the average trip length for each of. We know we're able to generate the average trip length for each of those types of trips, and the length of those trips times the number of vehicle trips gives us a total vehicle miles traveled. And I am simplifying this considerably, but that's the way this, that's the way the, the basic formula works. Now, in terms of, in, in terms of the, the tourist population, I, I don't believe there's specific call-out in our data about the, the tourism component of it. And again, we're only, we can only rely on the, the census data and what they've published, and I'm not sure that there's, again, they don't bifurcate out what's tourism-related and not. So I, I would have to go back and do some more research on that, figure out what level of tourism demand might be impacting these, these fees for you.
And looking at your formula, if you underestimate the vehicle miles traveled, it'll have a significant impact on the dollar amount of fees.
Uh, it, it could, it could. I'm not going to pretend to do the math in my head to, to, I would, I would have to go back and, and look at that. I'll have to go back and look at that.
As, as the fees are under-projected, then the ability to have a sufficient fee structure to support the necessary in, uh, infrastructure will be inadequate.
That, certainly, that, that could happen. But we also have to remember that with these fees, we can only bill to whatever the current level of service is, regardless of tourists or not, the current level of service. So that's one thing, that's one ceiling we're bumping up against, is based on the current level of service. And if the current level of service is not sufficient to meet the tourist demands, there would have to be other funding that comes in to help build up that level of service. And then that level of service, which is, which is accommodating tourism, you could design the streets fees around that level of service. So I'm not sure the current level of service of how much that incorporates tourist demand. And I think that's something we'd have to go back and examine. To find out, well, is the current level of services really meeting the tourist demand? And if it is, then we've accounted for it here. But I imagine as tourism is, continues to grow there, that the level of service we currently have may be a little insufficient, just hypothesizing, that it might be a little insufficient, and we'd have to use other funding to get us from point A to point B with that higher level of service that, that accounts for this future growth in, uh, growth in, in tourist demand. And then we can develop fees around that. So it, it required an examination of the current level of service and how well, if you were able to bifurcate the residential or, or city derived demand versus the tourist demand by looking at, you know, peak periods during, during the season, and find out what part of that current level of services is accommodating at, if it is. So that would be something that we can go back and examine with staff to see how much of the current level of service is designed for the tourist level of demand.
Thank, thanks, Todd. Mayor, if I could, just add a little on this, again, remembering that these are impact fees that are charged against residents. So you, you can't collect the cost of roadwork needed for tourists on the residents. So if the increased demand was related to the tourism, it would probably actually lower the fee on, on the residential units. So this is about the traffic from a residential unit and, of course, non-residential, which would have a tourist component. But it's, it's mainly about the non, our, the residential unit impact on the, the vehicles. So that simplifies, not simplifies, I, I don't mean that, but it makes it a little less challenging than trying to figure out tourist, uh, traffic flow. Another question, another thing you brought up, Mayor, that I wanted to address, your, the CYMPO and the 2.2% growth and that, that, that could be the fact in the central, in the central Yavapai metropolitan planning area. But the growth rate we need to come up with is the growth rate, growth rate within the city. And the growth rate within the city is 1.5 or actually probably a little lower than that. And we can calculate that and did calculate that using our utility accounts and the growth that we're seeing in our utility accounts. So even though the central Yavapai planning area might have a 2% growth rate in the city, our growth weight rate is significantly lower, which is why we use the.
That would capture the second home owners.
Yes, it would, because it's about utility accounts, unless they don't have water or wastewater, but they probably do.
Even though they only come up once a weekend per month.
It's still a long time to hold it.
Rusing?
Thank you. You mentioned residential. Why isn't commercial and industrial traffic figured into this?
Because it is. It is.
Because we have huge amounts of delivery trucks, tractor trailers, Amazon cement trucks, dump trucks rumbling all over town through our commercial districts and through all of our residents.
And it is part of it, and they do get charged for those developments, but it's on those developments. And I'll let Todd get into that. But I did want to make that point about tourists don't really factor too much into this equation except to be considered when looking at road volumes.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Thanks, Mark, for the clarification.
Councilwoman Worth has a question.
Yeah, and I don't know, Todd, if this is for you or this is back to Mark, and, and because we're on a learning curve here, bear with me. The streets area, you know, as our population grows, you know, and, and I can't even tell you how many meetings in the last three months the public has been raising about the issues with downtown parking. And so as our population grows, the need for parking grows. How do I think about that when we're talking about streets?
And I, I defer to Todd. I mean, I'm pretty sure streets is about lane miles and about capacity of the streets, not parking, whether in private lots or public lots, is kind of beyond that.
That's correct, Mark. Yeah, we're focusing just on the demand on the arterials.
And again, that downtown parking issue, councilwoman, that you're referring to is probably more a factor of that tourism, which is really not related to these fees. This is people who live here.
So if we want to get into the business of increasing our parking over the next 10 years, that's going to be something that we're going to have to do all unto ourselves or other organizations.
Well, when you're doing it on such.
Fees to help us.
When you're doing it on such a limited factor as the downtown area, I don't see how you, and again, I defer to the experts, but I don't, not sure how you would charge me as a resident, wherever I live in town, for downtown parking. Because I don't go downtown. Well, I work downtown, but generally, the, the person would, uh, you know, people would say, I don't go downtown. Why should I be charged for downtown parking when I live five miles away from downtown?
I just think as we try and later on in the agenda this afternoon, we'll be talking about economic development. The more we're focused on growing the population and economic development, the more parking we're going to need to deal with, given the size of our streets and our old city. We don't really have lots of spaces. So I'm just trying to figure out how to pay for it, and you just answered my question, which is it's not going to be through impact fees.
I, I don't think it is. We only provide parking as a city at our city facilities, but also just in the downtown area. We don't provide parking at the mall. We don't provide parking at Walmart or other places in town. So.
I understand that. It's, it's, it's a vibrant economic downtown that we all want, and so we're running out of parking, and the, the community is telling us. We're not making this up. The community has been telling us this. Thank you.
Excellent. Any other questions before I move on? Okay. So this, this slide here just kind of illustrates the, the level of complexity and how these different variables play into the equation of developing impact fees. And I won't go through the, the exact calculation, but I'll just point out that we have to look at our land use assumptions. We have to look at our travel demand statistics, which is developing number of trips. And again, that comes the, from the ITE, which there's, it's a huge volume, number of volumes that looks at all different types of establishments and the type of, uh, number of trips coming in versus number of trips coming out. You might have seen in the past, when you're driving on the road, you see the little rubber strip going across the road. That's when they're counting the number of trips, the number of vehicles going over that, and that kind of information is what kind defines, well, how do we know what the travel demand is that a convenience store is placing on, on the road system? Or even a, a retail establishment or a restaurant? And so there's, it's based off statistical models done by the ITE across the United States. So it's, it's kind of a hodgepodge of statistical samples of determining the trips in and out, and based on the number of lane miles the city has, uh, and the number of trips we're able to generate, what is, what's the average trip length for these different types of things? And, and we'll come up with a total trip length, which results in a, via total VMT. So we have all these different vehicle, travel demand statistics that go into the equation. We have our level of service we need to maintain, lane miles per VMT. We're going to stay at that level. And the fee calculation, we've got a lot of information here on the, on the, on the right here. We have our IIP costs divided by the 10-year vehicle miles traveled that we're adding over 10 years. And then we get our capital cost per VMT, dollar per VMT. We multiply that times the land use average trip length for each of the different type of land uses, the residential, commercial, residential, office and, and institutional and so on, and we always get the fee by land use. So a lot of, a lot of numbers and calculations going into this, but we're really reliant on these data sets from these published reference manuals, which have been used for quite some time to help develop the fees. And we incorporate anything that is unique to the city in here as well, if possible. So like I said, it's, uh, we're using all of that data together to come up with the total fee. And changes in any one of these obviously would adjust the fee for the residential and the other non-residential types of demand. Here is our infrastructure improvement plan that we worked on with staff. We can see that we're adding four additional lane miles. We have a total cost here in column three. We have this growth within the city and 80%, 20%, 30%, so on and so forth. And then that gives us our growth-funded cost of $17.7 million. That's what we are going to use to help derive what the fee needs to be to recover that $17.73 million. Now, the funded by other revenues, this is from taxes, sales tax, or some other source of funds, not included in the impact fee. We're not recovering that through the impact fee. The goal is to set our impact fees such that over a 10-year period, we're going to recover $17.7 million to pay for the growth-related portion of these improvements that the city's identified. And so this is a plan-based, we're looking forward, we're looking to the capital projects moving forward. So here's the, uh, we go through all those steps and all the calculations, and we end up with.
Mr. Man, Furworth, you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So help me understand in the previous slide, growth within the city, future. How were those projects, given those percentages? Who was involved, and how did we do that? What was the basis?
Well, we, we, we did work with staff. First, we had to define, well, what are those projects that are non-growth, period? What are the, what are the projects that have growth in them? And what are the projects that are, you know, maybe regional or outside? So we're able to slice those off. We relied on working with city staff and the public works department, and Mark, I'm not sure who else was involved in helping come up with those numbers, but maybe you can share some information on that.
Yeah, it was, uh, the city staff, engineering, and public works worked with us to do that. And again, it's, it's, yeah, it's related to additional lane miles, or if you're going to make a significant improvement in a roadway that will increase capacity. So if you're just replacing asphalt that doesn't increase capacity, and that's a maintenance factor that's paid for, not by development fees, it's paid for by the sales tax. So I don't know, is that, do you have a specific question that you?
Well, yeah, I wasn't, you know, for me, um, you know, I get the amount of growth, why we have to now coordinate our signals so that we can get all this traffic moving through a very fine and not going to increase number lane. So I get the 80% there. But if I think about things like the four-point, and I don't even know what this is, the four-point intersection improvement. By, okay, by the hospital, but I don't know why we're improving it. I do know, from standing at that corner a lot over the last few years, the growth coming down Willow Creek Road is intense in the morning. And it's been, you know, it's been picking up. So I'm really surprised to see that only down at 20%, which makes it seem like only the locals in the downtown area are the ones that are moving through that intersection, and I would have thought that would have been higher.
And again, that's, that's not what that percentage is saying. And again, I, I defer to Todd, but that 20% growth is that project, 20% of that project to improve that intersection will increase capacity of that intersection. It's not saying that.
So the percentage is only tied to?
Increased capacity, yes.
Growth is kind of a misnomer for that title, for that column.
Well, it's growth of that, it's growth of the capacity of the asset, but I see what you're saying. It could be misleading. It's not because that's new people going through there. But it's the increased capacity that that project will provide to that intersection.
Okay, I under, now, if I titled it "capacity increased," I get what you're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, council. We can make that change. It's actually a good clarification. Yes?
Thank you. Help me out here. I see total cost. Let's round that up to 42 million. And can you tell me what percentage of that will be funded by the impact fees and what percentage is funded by other revenue? If we do the impact fees, round that up to 18 million. What, what are the percentages? How does that break out?
Uh, I believe that is the 42% of the total $41 million cost is funded by the, will be funded by the impact fees of the $17.7 million. The $24 million will be funded, it's from some other source.
What percent? So we got 42% funded by the impact fees?
42% of the $41 million will be funded by impact fees, or that's, it should be equal to $17.7 million.
Okay. All righty, thank you.
Yeah, we will make that change, and that's a very good point. It, it, capacity associated with growth, but I think adding the capacity dollars associated with capacity would probably be more informative there. Here are the fees. There is quite a big jump here with somebody's proposed fees, and that's, that's typical with a plan-based because.
Sorry to interrupt you again, Todd.
Yeah, sure.
Rusing had a follow-up question.
I'm sorry, I just find this topic so exciting. I can't control myself with my questions. Let me just ask you something. Do you build in a buffer, like in case you kind of underestimate thing, kind of a margin of error, you know, like plus or minus 5% or anything like that?
No, not, not explicitly like that. We try to be conservative on our, you know, our growth numbers. You know, we can look at different growth scenarios of a 3% growth and 1.5, but we really have to pick what's realistic. And that's why we have these conversations with staff. We, we certainly don't want to overestimate and then overcharge for fees, collect more than what is needed, only to have to refund. So it is, we are conservative. We, we try to double verify numbers from somewhere else besides just one source and, but no, we don't add in a, a specific, you know, plus or minus factor, if you will.
Thank you.
So here are the proposed fees. There is some increase here between the current fee, and like I said, with a plan-based approach, we're looking at the cost of new projects, even though we're maintaining the same level of service. We just know that costs have gone up considerably, and I'm, I'm sure Andrew's presentation will see some of that on the, on the water and wastewater side, just with, you know, materials alone. So this is not surprising, A, with the recent huge growth or increase in cost, but also just the, the types of projects that the city is undertaking as part of these impact fees. Let's move on to fire. Fire is hopefully not as complex as, as streets with the VMT and all that good stuff. Again, we include only the growth-related share. We exclude portions of facilities that will service populations beyond the 10-year study period. Now, we're looking at the incremental method for fire. So what's, what we're going to be able to do is calculate the current level of service based on the current replacement cost of the vehicles and buildings. We're going to be able to back into, say, well, here's how much you can afford to spend with impact fees based on this current level of service. So whereas the streets, we're saying, here's our capital plan, let's back into the rates. Here, we're using our, our level of service, the square foot of facilities per person or the vehicles per person, and looking at that level of service and looking at, well, what's the current replacement cost of facilities that you have, facilities or vehicles? And based on the number of the growth in population and this unit replacement cost will tell us how many squares. us how many square feet can we fund with impact fees over the 10 year period? So it's a little bit coming, a little bit working backing into a result when you compare to the plan based or future based approach. We're looking at a service demand allocation of functional population, and I'll talk about that in a minute. It's a way to proportion out the demand requirements of fire and police. So anything about the demand requirements, the demands are being placed on the facilities and the demands are being placed on vehicles. There's a demand, there's a residential demand for vehicles in terms of, you know, calls for service. And there's a demand for vehicles placed on by non residential. We use a functional population to calculate or spread out or determine what is the appropriate demand and appropriate level of service from that for non residential versus residential. And I've got another slide on this. I'll talk about in a second. Our level of service, we are basing off of inventory of 41 vehicles, and that's all major vehicles, fire trucks, pumper trucks, chief vehicles and that sort of thing, and the average replacement cost today. And we work with staff to get what the average replacement cost. In some instances, some new police cars were being delivered and recent fire trucks have been delivered. So they had a current recent replacement cost on some of the vehicles. The average cost.
You had a question.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor Todd. Question for you, just so I am clear. In the difference of residential versus non residential, we have several businesses and a growing number of businesses that also have residents living there called sober living homes and other other kind of outplacement services from our service care center and or new jail, however you want to call it. So how do I think about that, all that business? Is that considered residential? Or is that considered non residential because it's a business?
I don't know the answer to that. I will have to look at that because we are relying, again, on census data and splitting out the population of the census data and how they are placing demands on the system to to the residential side of the equation, as well as their their impact on the non residential side. So.
And that's one of the reasons I'm interested in the answer is because they actually are placing a huge portion of service needs onto our public safety folks. So I want to make sure we're not under qualifying them by putting them in the wrong bucket.
Are they citizens? Or would they be considered as part of the census? That might be one way to consider this.
Well, I'm not sure. I don't know that they establish residency while they're here for months getting care.
Okay. Let me walk through the equation on it, and that might help a little bit. But I'd have to do some more research on that for you because, again, there's a lot of components that go into the the census data and how they track population movement in and out of the city. So we have to do a little more research on that. On the level of service vehicles, we determined that the average replacement cost for fire vehicles $517,000. So that number is going to help us determine that $517,000 times the number of vehicles that we can add based on the current level of service, the number of vehicles we can add based on the current level of service, times that unit rate of 517 will tell us, here's how much you can spend over the next 10 years based on your current level of service. Level of service buildings, we have about 38,594 square feet of fire stations, and the average cost per square foot is $700 in today's dollars. So those are the unit replacement cost numbers we're using to generate our 10 year, our 10 year total dollars that can be funded through impact fees. So we had, we made two methodology changes in fire to add a little more complexity to this. We made two methodology changes. We, in the prior study, we used calls for service to split out the demand for vehicles for non residential type activities versus residential. The challenge with that is that calls for service vary, very, very quite a bit. And sometimes they may not be classified correctly. So the percentage of calls related to a residential call versus a non residential call can get kind of murky. And when we looked at it again, compared to the study five years ago, the numbers had kind of flipped around a little bit. Residential percentages went down, non residential went up. And so calls for service is probably not the best indicator, at least for consistency. So we use this functional population to determine the demand required of vehicles and buildings from non residential and residential land use types. And it's functional population is more stable over time. It's commonly used and it's actually preferred method over calls for service when warranted. The methodology change number two is we decided to base the fee or help develop the fee for non residential based on vehicle trip ends, the number of trips taken for land use, different land uses. And again, before that, we used jobs. And there's there's pros and cons with using both. But basically, at the end of the day, the vehicle trip ends methodology better reflected the demand requirement for these non residential land use types, the three different land use types that we have, more so than jobs. So we've switched to the vehicle trip ends on that. And you'll see, you'll be able to see in the in the change in the fee, what that does to the change in the fee. So those are the two methodology changes. Again, these are not major change, these these changes to these two different, the the functional population and the vehicle trip ends, very common and not unusual, not unusual at all.
Councilmember Rusing.
Sorry to interrupt again. I have a question. When you're putting these figures together, do you factor in our neighbor, the Yavapai Prescott Indian Tribe? Because they have a very big commercial area that we provide fire service to. They have a hotel, resort, Home Depot, big shopping center. Are they included in any of these numbers?
Just, we are just including the demand for facilities within the the city limits.
Do you, do you think that would warrant including them? Or is there some already a contract or some history we have?
Well, we cannot.
Oh, sorry, Todd. I was just.
Go ahead, Mark.
Obviously, we cannot collect impact fees for development on the tribe. So you can't add development that isn't within your city on development that is within your city.
But we provide fire to them.
That is correct. We do that under a contract and we, they pay quarterly, I believe, on that.
Okay.
So that's all when we do that contract is how you would recover those costs.
And do you know how long that contract's for? Is it?
I do not know. It's, it's a little off topic. And I don't know if it, I don't know that contract detail.
Thank you.
And if I could, while we're talking about the split between residential and non residential related to recovery homes, something to keep in mind, again, these are impact fees which are paid at the time of permit. So when you build your 3,500 square foot house, you pay an impact fee. If you decide a year later to make that a recovery home, you don't pay a different impact fee. So that differential between residential and commercial doesn't really matter in developing the impact fee. I understand what you're saying, Councilman, because there's more demand, because that's a recovery home. But we don't know when a house is built, if it's ever going to be turned into a recovery home. And impact fees are only collected once at the time of permitting for a new residence. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. Okay. So there's methodology changes. We think it better reflects the level of service, and it should produce more predictable results in the future, too, going on to the next study in future. So again, the components of the fire fee, we're looking at the existing square feet of vehicles and, I'm sorry, existing building square feet, existing number of vehicles, looking at the functional population, the non residential functional population, and the average unit cost of the buildings and average unit cost of vehicles. And that helps us get to our fee. And we often consider the growth in population and the non residential growth stated in vehicle trips. How many trips are we adding to these different non residential land uses? How many more trips are these non, non residential land uses generating? Functional population. This is from what's called on the map. You can see a little diagram here of an arrow going in and arrows going out. And what we look at is for a functional population is, there's the population of the of the citizens of Prescott, and they're placing demands on the system, police, fire, and streets to an extent, but we look at things differently for streets. And we have to consider the time they spend in the city and whether they work inside the city, or whether they travel outside the city for work, or whether people outside the city are traveling inside the city for work. So that helps us determine our, our functional population, that split of 70 to 30. And again, there's some, you know, detailed calculations behind this. We're more than happy to share that with you, and it will be in the final report. But really, it's based on the daytime population, the influx and outflow of customers, or I'm sorry, citizens. In this example, we're showing that citizens that are, the population that lives outside the city but is employed inside the city coming in, they're placing demands on the system. The employed and living in the city, the 6256, and then we have the people living in the selection area but employed outside. Now, we're not building capacity necessarily for people coming inside to the city. We're thankfully trying to figure out the demand within, how to split the demand within, between residential demand and non residential demand, land use demand. So it's functional population, that's, that's the basis. Really, this, this, what's this kind of, this continuous daytime population for us to help split out the the need for facilities by residential land use or the non residential land uses? And so when we look at all of that, we have the functional population, we have the level of service, we have the unit replacement cost, all those components. So we know that we have the existing facilities. And here, we're just using square feet of buildings right now as an example. We know we're able, through the functional population split 70 30, we can get the number of, the amount of square feet that should be allocated to residential, the amount of square feet that should be residential, commercial or non residential. And that way, we're able to get our building square feet per person or building square feet per vehicle trip. That's our level of service. That's our current level of service. We add the population growth in, we add in the growth number of trips. So now we're able to multiply those together to get a total. Now we're able to figure out the total residential buildings, the amount of square feet needed for residential population growth, what's the total square footage we're going to need over the 10 year period. The same thing with the, what's the amount of growth or amount of square footage we're going to need for non residential using vehicle trips. So now we have the total square footage we're going to add, and same process for vehicles. We can take those unit, those numbers and multiply them times those unit costs for the vehicle of $517,000 and the $700 per square foot for the buildings. And that's how we come up with our total dollar amount of I I P that we can afford based on this current level of service for the fire, for the fire department. And so again, I am breezing past this. What took us many months to do, I'm breezing past in 30 seconds. So it's a little complex. But again, we'll have this in the report. And of course, you'll be able to review that and see how this all fits together with some real numbers. So here's how much that we can, we can build over the 10 year period. At the end of the day, $5.7 million. So the next slide I show you is here are the fees that will be able to support or develop $5.7 million worth of vehicle and facilities, vehicle and facilities over the 10 year study period. That's what we're trying to get to. We can't recover anything more because that would suggest that we're asking for a greater level of service. And here are the fees associated with that. About almost $1,000 change on the current and proposed fee. And again, we did switch from the functional population to from the calls for service and the V T E. So this should be more stable in the future. But you can see there's obviously an increase here on these fees versus the current fees. So again, fairly complex, a lot going into the fire fees, but it's, what's the major difference is using that functional population and also ending up with here's how much you can fund in an I I P based on this current level of service. That's the key point with fire. Move on to police. Police has done the exact same way as fire. Again, includes the growth share, the functional population, the average cost of vehicles, the average cost per square foot of facilities. So same process there. One of the methodologies we changed here was we switched from calls for service to functional population. So nothing different here than what we changed in fire. And that was the only methodology change because we were already using vehicle trip ends to determine the the growth and the fee for non residential. And again, it should better reflect demand requirements between the two different types of land uses, residential and the non residential land uses. Same components here, vehicles, existing building square footage, functional population, the average unit cost of facilities and buildings, facilities and vehicles. And again, our residential population growth, our non residential growth in vehicle trips. So exactly the same as fire. I don't show the graph.
As a question, Todd.
Sure.
Todd, this is my fifth year here. So I wasn't involved in the previous conversation setting these fees five years ago. But were you, were you the person that we used five years ago? Are you a new person?
I'm a new person.
Okay. I just want to thank you for doing this. This is very, very impressive because I am just astounded at the, the big change in fees. I mean, going, the street fees are for less than, for 1,800 square feet are quadrupling and the other fees are tripling. And then I look at these fire fees going from 187 to over 1,000. I mean, this is a big, a big jump. And my question is, were we low balling things five years ago? I mean, I'm just shocked at this, this huge discrepancy in the fees.
You know, I can't say for sure. But what we have seen on impact fees, non utility, but also the utility water, wastewater, I'm sure Andrew might have similar results, I'm not sure, that the past five years, I mean, when you adopted your fees, I think in 19, that was right at the cusp of when inflation just started taking off. So you may have gotten it under the gun. The number of projects for the streets may have been different. It may not have been as robust of capital plan. Now, with these fees, you can adopt anything up to these fees, it's maximum supportable. So if the council can choose to develop, to adopt something lower than this, but if you still build those projects, you'll need to fund them with some other funds. And other communities are facing the same challenges, and they have to make that tough decision of, well, do we adopt the full fees and run the risk of concerns by developers or being able to fund growth and all that good stuff. But yes, they, it has been a change. I can't really pinpoint one thing that would be a result of the chain, causing a change. But I just do know that the, the construction cost, the material costs have been increasing quite a bit over the past couple of years. The supply chain is still, still kind of issue. It's calming down. But unfortunately, that's one of the biggest drivers.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I wish I had a better answer for you. So the fees we're going to develop here, based on all of our calculations, we're going to calculate a fee that will develop, that will retain, recover, sorry, $3.68 million in growth related costs. And here are the fees for that. Again, these are going about $500 for the single family based on the square footage. Now, what's good about the square footage here is that most community, a lot of communities don't have this, this kind of tiered structure. So this does provide a little bit more, I guess, an equitable split of fees, recognizing that a smaller home, the demands on a smaller home is less than, say, a larger home. So there is, there is some, I guess, relief there in a sense. So that's the existing proposed police fees. And that brings me to the conclusion there. I appreciate your time. It was a lot of information. Be happy to answer any questions outside this meeting if you have them. Or Mark, if there's additional questions from council, we can certainly do that. But that concludes my portion of the, of the slide deck. And I appreciate your time today.
Thank you, Todd. And I just wanted to say for the council and for the public, our large public audience here, and TV audience, that all the documents, L U, L U A and I I Ps, the land use assumptions and infrastructure improvement plans for the non utility as well as the utility, and the, the documents for the rate study, all these documents are quite extensive in length, but they are all on our website and available for review as we move towards our public hearings and adoption of these things as we move forward. So with that, we need to, we have three presentations, and that was the first one today. The second one is by Andrew Reams, who's here in person with Raf Talis. And he's going to go over the next two presentations, the utility, I I P and L U A, as well as the rate study for water and wastewater.
Thank you, Mark. Just a little, little brief overview, and I know it's very difficult to. Just a little, little brief overview and I know, uh, very difficult to, to present in the setting as the lone virtual member, but, uh, as Mark indicated, Todd and I both work for a firm, Raph Talis. He and I are both based in our Denver metro office. Uh, we're, we're a national firm that assists local governments throughout the country. Uh, certainly Todd and I kind of focus in, in this part of the country, the Mountain West and, and, uh, the Western region and, and kind of, our specialty is more on the financial side, rates, fees, the things that we're talking about today. But as a company, we've got about 180 people throughout the country that do get into others of local government outside of rates and fees and organizational assessments, kind of strategic planning, uh, data and, and some of the other kind of, uh, uh, operational aspects of, of running, you know, utility or city.
Andrew, I will, uh, welcome you back because you were here last time. Uh, I remember having you, uh, present to the council five years ago.
And, and that, the nice segue, I, I helped, uh, manage the previous study both in 2019 and then 2014. And it, uh, worked with the city on some other, uh, studies going back to, I believe, 2004 was, uh, the first, uh, time I had a chance to work with, uh, Prescott and Todd has also assisted Prescott some years ago as well. So just, you know, a little, little bit of just background in terms of familiarity and, and in this case, you know, this is, uh, switching gears to the utility impact fee study, very similar agenda. Um, it, it, it's a bit of more of an update of what we had done in the past, but, uh, as, as, you know, we'll, we'll go through, uh, there's, you know, different drivers, kind of different elements and, uh, we are anticipating or calculating, uh, increases and, and, uh, two of the, uh, fees that we're looking at. But, um, we kind of back up and, and, um, also going to try not to cover some of the same ground that was reviewed and really just try and highlight, uh, some of the differences. So if I go too fast, certainly let me know. Um, the statutory requirements are the same, whether it's a non-utility impact fee or utility impact fee. So we're dealing with the same, you know, public hearing steps, days, you know, thou shalt and the windows and, and ultimately, uh, the, the beginning of the end, uh, to the end. Um, now the data piece are a little different. You know, Todd spoke a lot about, you know, whether it's, uh, streets or fire or police. Um, in, in terms of the utilities, the, the kind of projected service units, um, they're people driven and also kind of growth driven, but, uh, we're more interested in accounts, you know, water sales, peak demands as we go through and, and calculate and evaluate, uh, the, these fees. So a little, little bit different and, and then there's a, uh, an acronym, uh, that you'll see, you know, in the, the slides, equivalent development units or EDUs. It, it, it's a way of trying to get it to sort of a single equivalence across different types or, or in the case of utilities, uh, meter sizes. Um, but the, the intent of the sort of LUA and IIP are the same. I mean, it, it's kind of starts with, uh, looking out and, and utilities do, uh, pretty extensive long-term planning. Um, and, and so that ends up being kind of the driver says, okay, this is what we're anticipating, these are the facilities we have, they have a certain amount of capacity and at some point we either have sufficient capacity to meet the projected demand for, you know, and maybe in some cases perpetually forever. Most cases you kind of run out of, at a certain point in time. So when those get identified or if growth is going to be in an area where we don't have facilities, we need to extend a line, run a line. Um, and then once those, uh, customers come online, you know, they, they start driving, uh, demands at the plants. Uh, so that ultimately identifies those facilities, uh, that, that are growth related or expansionary. And in, in the case of, uh, the LUA and IIP for the city of Prescott, also an extensive evaluation of the additional, uh, uh, updates of existing facilities and also other kind of drivers, if you will. So I mean, ultimately, um, it, it, it's around identifying the improvements that are eligible, but also the other aspects of, of overall, uh, growth and, and customers and, and ultimately what we anticipate needing over in this case about a 10-year period, uh, moving forward. Um, same kind of key dates and, and timeline is highlighted, you know, we're, we're getting into, uh, two weeks from now would be the first public hearing and, uh, the other dates that have been identified, anticipating, you know, if these steps are completed, uh, that, that changes in fees could go into effect, uh, January 1st of 25. Um, as Todd indicated, there, there's, you know, similar kind of approach, uh, where we've got one, um, that's backward looking. The, the base is the availability of the data, the kind of information that we have is usually a little bit better on the utility side and, and also kind of, we're, we're taking it down to a limiting, uh, or a limiter i- is often a little bit easier when it comes to utilities in terms of, uh, existing capacity. Uh, so, you know, the, the buy-in or the backward looking approach would basically look at assets in the ground, things that have been constructed as the outcome to say, okay, we constructed this, you know, it has this cost for the capacity it's providing and that's the basis for the unit cost that new development is tying into. Uh, the incremental, very similar is, is, is forward looking and that, you know, conversely it looks ahead and says, you know, we're running out of capacity, we're needing to expand facilities and the best or the most indicative unit cost, again, of the impact that new development is having and the need to expand those facilities or the cost that we have in the future. And, and there's a little bit of a difference in, in the, uh, utility side where there's a blended or in this case a hybrid that effectively, uh, takes the weighted average of the backward and the forward looking approaches and combines them together. Uh, this approach is very suitable for communities and utilities like Prescott that are relatively mature, but there's still some expansionary or growth related, uh, requirements moving forward. And, and so this is the basis for the fees that had been adopted in place today. Uh, the hybrid is also, uh, the basis for the fees that, that essentially in the methodology that I think, uh, still makes sense, uh, for, uh, these utilities and, and for the city. So with that kind of little bit of backdrop, I'm going to get a little bit more in, into, uh, some of the details and I'm going to start with, uh, the, the growth assumptions. Um, and, you know, this, this is one of the kind of primary requirements and, and one of the, uh, processes that, that sort of starts things, uh, early on. Uh, again, it's legislative requirement, we look out maybe 10, uh, some areas up to 15 years and, and we're anticipating, we're forecasting the growth in, in, uh, demands. Uh, ultimately that, you know, ends up being the outcome, whether it's EDUs, accounts, uh, projected flows that, that then, uh, may, you know, drive the need to look at additional facilities, um, a- as well as identifying, you know, when we essentially exceed the capacity, uh, that we have in the system and, and kind of main system components. Now, as we've gone through this lengthy process, this, this sort of started, uh, with, uh, an update by the, uh, city's district, city's engineering consultant that, uh, developed this document. And, um, we, we've started, we've made some adjustments in terms of the, uh, information that we've incorporated in the fee calculation. As growth slowed, uh, since, uh, when, when this study was, was initiated and we'll see a, a little bit that the near-term projection is a little bit higher than what we're experiencing and what we're kind of anticipating. Um, there's also sort of an impact, it's not just kind of that exercise of projecting the growth, but also when we look at, at, uh, the revenue that comes in from it and how it may get applied, in this case utilities and, and how it may influence or impact, uh, our other revenue source for, for our utilities being our user charge rates. We want to be a little bit conservative as well as Todd indicated, there, there's sort of this kind of refund provision that, that if we're too aggressive and we anticipate doing too much and we don't build it, uh, there, there, there's some potential that, that we could essentially be asked to, uh, refund, uh, fees that we've collected. Little remote, unlikely, but again, you know, we, we want to be, uh, a little conservative without being too conservative. And, and these adjustments are a little different than the, the document that's been published as the IIP. It did influence and impact the timing of some of the expansionary projects, but not in, in a significant way that it shifted things sort of outside of our period or window. Um, there, there were some other refinements in terms of some of the cost estimates. Uh, so, you know, as we go through this process, we anticipate, you know, identifying more directly within the, the amended documents, we go through this, the LUA and IIP, uh, these changes. But as we are making these adjustments from what we published and effectively driving the fee calculation, i- i- it was important, I think, to get ahead a little bit of, uh, the, the public hearings and the statutory requirements. Um, so I'm just sort of highlighting, uh, the, the initial draft had a little bit higher of a growth rate, um, and the growth rates in this case in the, uh, equivalent development units. Uh, I was anticipating a higher growth in the first four years, kind of dropping down in the next five and then further dropping down in the next five. And I, I should also add that, um, these were looked at in kind of five-year windows, if you will, a- as the long-range document and the, the planning, uh, was being evaluated. So then we translate this into kind of annual information for, for purposes of, uh, both the fee study as well as it gets tied into, um, you know, what we're anticipating growth i- in terms of, uh, the rate study as well. And so we've, we've adjusted, uh, based more on the, the growth that we're seeing more recently and things have, have really slowed down a bit from where they were a couple of years ago within the city. So it's a little bit, uh, more conservative, certainly on, on the front end and then a little bit flatter, we're, we're at about this, uh, one and, a little lower than one and a half percent, uh, when we get into, uh, the projected growth 25, 26, uh, through the final year of 23, 34. These are, you know, certainly water system information and then, you know, similar type of environment, just different numbers. We have fewer accounts and, uh, fewer of these EDUs on the wastewater system. So, you know, basically a, uh, lower numbers, but similar types of adjustments, um, that ultimately are tied into, uh, the, the, uh, fee calculations.
Councilmember Rusing.
Thank you. Since we're looking so far ahead in the future, 10, 15 years, um, did you include any, uh, costs for the Big Chino Water Ranch Pipeline in your calculations?
That was not one of the, uh, IIP eligible facilities. So if, if, you know, it's beyond the 10-year period, I guess, uh, in brief. I know it's a little more complicated than that, but that, that particular project is not in the 10-year study period.
So none of these impact fees will pay for any costs of the Big Chino Pipeline, even though it's related to growth and development?
Uh, there's a bit where we've got to identify the improvements, um, and we're limited to this 10 to 15-year period at a maximum. So it's basically whether or not those are in this 10 to 15-year window and, and basically the, that particular project is not. I will get to the, there, there's a legacy with a water resource fee that has a historical aspect to the Big Chino Project, but in terms of, you know, what's anticipated, i- it's currently beyond the 10-year period. So it's, it's not included, I guess, short answer.
So even if it was 15 years ahead, like you're, um, said 15-year, 10, 15-year period, you're saying that's not included?
I- i- it's after 23, uh, 2033, 34, 23, uh, 34 was the final year we had kind of evaluated.
Because, um, because we have a, uh, we might, you know, with the drought and everything, it might occur sooner than that, but we don't have any plans to collect, start collecting money to fund it?
And, and that, you know, if projects change or a project like that were to be identified to be included, then, uh, the city would, uh, go through a process to amend the IIP and effectively update, uh, this study or these, these types of calculations. That would be the step if it does sort of come in, uh, to the 10-year period. But right now it's, it's outside of it, so we're not collecting fees for the Big Chino, uh, project.
All righty, thank you.
Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mayor. Let me ask you about that graph you have up there. You indicate a drop in, uh, level of service or growth starting in 2027. How do you base, what do you base that on? Is that just an economic forecast or how, how are you coming up with that?
Uh, Mark alluded to this earlier when we were talking about it. We, we looked at, uh, both, uh, more recent and then kind of longer-term, uh, growth in utility accounts. And that, that's, you know, what we're, uh, anticipating, say in this current fiscal year, 23, 24 we're in, i- you know, somewhat based on growth that, that we've got part way through the year. Um, but that, that's really what we lowered it is basically the growth we've seen in the last year or so.
But is it based on historical data? I mean, I'm not sure, or is it, what is it, Mark? Is it the economic forecast? How do we know that we're going to have that distinct drop in 2027? I, I see probably what you've got there from 2023 is based on, um, the, the permits.
So the, the red line here, and Andrew, correct me if I'm wrong, is from the Corolla Report. That's what the engineers, uh, who put together the Corolla Report?
Correct.
Did is the red lines. The lines that staff came up with are those, I go with blue, maybe purple, I'm not sure, I'm not very good with that, the purple lines. And we did ours, I can't speak to how Corolla did theirs, but we did ours on historical trend. Uh, as I'm looking at the last 13 years, our average growth rate over a 13-year period is 1.25 in EDUs. Uh, the current year is about 0.76, it's not even a full percent. So that's where our blue line came from, which is how we, uh, what we used in putting the fees together because, you know, it doesn't do any good to look at 12,000, 1,200 units in a year when you're not going to get them, you're not going to have that revenue, you can't build anything from it.
And what did you call that report? The Corolla Report?
Corolla Engineering puts together our, uh, our model, is it model?
Is that also on the website?
It is what we published for this, uh, land use assumptions and EDUs, which is why we're explaining the differential between that report and what we used in the rate study with this graph.
So that's a drastic drop right there between 26 and 27. Yeah, at least 50%.
That is correct, yes. 27, yeah.
Is there, uh, how reliable is that? I mean, that just doesn't seem right, but just curious.
And again, I guess I'd look to Public Works to talk more about the Corolla Report because I'm not quite sure where they came up with their projections.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I'm just curious about how we've projected the future at a 50% drop.
We, we did not, we, our projection is the blue. The rate study is based on that blue line. Um, so it's, and again, we're presenting this just to point out the differential between the land use assumptions that were published as part of this report and the land use assumptions used in calculating these fees.
Okay, thank you.
And, and the impact was, you know, in terms of the, the facilities that were needed, it didn't have as significant impact. It was more, as, as Mark indicated, if we're projecting revenues based on, you know, this higher level and they're not realized, we're going to think we're, you know, anticipating more money coming in over say this 10-year period than what we may realize. And, and it, it is a bit of a catch 22 when, you know, the, this type of assumption, you know, how it affects the facilities, but also, um, how, how it may influence, uh, the revenue collections. So I'm going to, uh, switch to the, the water system and, and, and more just kind of highlighting a, a few of the pieces, um, and, uh, the bigger kind of drivers, if you will. Um, I, I mentioned this earlier, you know, this is a snapshot of, of what we have for, uh, water accounts, uh, by meter size and the, uh, equivalent development units are, are a matter of, uh, as the meter sizes are larger, there's a higher capacity, uh, to produce or demand water, more water can, can basically, uh, be provided with, with the larger connections. So that equivalent development unit being that 5/8 inch, uh, connection that the vast majority, about, you know, 85% of our customers have, um, i- is one. And then those larger meter sizes are, are kind of a multiple of one. When we look at, uh, some of the, the demands and, and we analyze the fees and calculate the fees, we're using this sort of EDU or this, this total, uh, that factors, you know, kind of the count, but also, uh, the meter size itself. Um, the, the other, uh, kind of key limitation on the water side is, you know, we've got a, a very complicated and intricate water system that has been developed and very sophisticated. Um, and, and the, the limitation that we have in terms of providing treated water comes down to the ability to, uh, you know, produce it from wells and, and treat it and, uh, that, that's that current limitation. So this identifies the existing facilities and as water supply i- is done in a sort of constraint, if you will, and, and, and as these systems are evaluated, uh, the, the largest well is taken out of service in order to come to the sort of our firm capacities i- is what it's referred to. So we've got, uh, 13.14 million gallons per day in firm capacity in the ground. And then as what's been identified in that 10-year period is one additional well, um, that, that would add to that and would result in about 14 and a half million gallons per day in, in terms of that capacity, if you will. And, and this is kind of important, uh, for, for the fee calculations because, you know, this is the And this is kind of important for the fee calculations because, you know, this is the capacity we have in the system and through this IIP period and the rough 10 years that we're looking at. It's very similar, you know, kind of information in the previous study, but, you know, we've constructed a well and kind of the anticipated needs have been updated as well. One of the other components that influences the fee, kind of independent of some of the dollars and some of the facilities, is the peak day demands. You know, we build a water system around average daily demands and daily demands, but we're often constrained, and the city's system is no different, based on the peak demands. And that's how much of it ends up being sized. So as we look at a side-by-side calculation for what we did back in the '19 study, you know, that sort of peak day demand is down a little bit over a more recent period, but we've added some customers. So it's the water demand per this same equivalent development unit is less. But the kind of positive side of this is that our existing facilities can serve customers for longer. So, you know, while this will influence the fee because the amount of water per EDU is lower, the kind of big picture benefit is what we've got in the ground is, you know, going to serve customers and new growth for a little bit longer than what we were anticipating back in 2019. Now, the kind of other element of this, and, you know, there's a fair amount of capital improvements. This is identifying and listing those, the first many of them are those that are growth-related or the term infrastructure improvement plan eligible projects. And it just kind of goes through and identifies the total cost, the portion that's growth-related, and then, you know, from our funding sources, whether it's the impact fees, those aspects that come from growth, or rate-funded, those items that were replacing capacity or addressing a service level. And then kind of our anticipated funding sources being external debt, yes, or if it's no, we're anticipating kind of cash funding it. Now, that final project is multiple projects that are all non-growth-related. But I guess just sort of imbalance, this ties into the second presentation I'll be giving, in terms of the rate-funded requirements, that of these, you know, kind of overall capital, 20% of them are growth-related, and we look impact fees, and they're tied into the impact fee we're calculating, whereas 80% of the costs are tied into, you know, things that are not growth-related, and we look to our rate payers to fund those. And this basically takes that same information and just kind of charts it between these two funding sources. And while it's not necessarily, you know, the cash flow in a given year, it is, you know, the portions of the projects that are growth-related or impact fee-funded and the balance and the bigger portion, and the orange bars that are tied to rates or would be rate-funded. So, you know, and I'm kind of brushing, running through this a little bit in the interest of time. These are preliminary calculations. We're a little ahead of kind of the formal issuance of the report, but it's very difficult to look at sort of these, you know, infrastructure improvement documents or land use assumptions without having an idea of kind of what ultimately may be the fee. So for water, we've got two different service areas. And for many, pay both, and most connections pay a combination of A and B. But we maintain this sort of split where we've got the initial part of the system, that's the service area A, and then the balance of the system that we pick up in service area B. So we're calculating increases for A, it's $83. Again, this is per EDU or that base meter size, as are all these fees, over the current fee. And then with B, it's certainly a higher dollar amount, much more of the system we're seeing in B that would translate to, when you combine the two, an increase in just the water system component of about $1,250. And so I'm going to turn to the water resource, and this one's a little unique in that this fee has been in place, and it's tied to debt that the city issued historically. And this is one of those that is a sort of a holdover within the statute that we can keep a fee that was in place before to the extent that it's being used and recovering a debt issuance that was outstanding prior to some, whoops, some of the changes in the statute back in 2014 that those came into effect. So we've updated this fee a couple of times, and so it's a little limited to future debt service around previous acquisition. And as a result, and we've gone through and we've updated, and there was the update in the reduction in water use per EDU that factored into that. And so all of these kind of changes, this particular fee, we're looking to reduce it. And again, this is pretty limited. It's basically being collected, and it may be used to repay the debt service and the debt that the city had issued that ultimately acquired the water rights many years ago. This fee would sunset, you know, everything else being equal, once that debt issuance is paid off. And again, this is consistent with the statutory requirements. So over time, we've got kind of less to pay effectively, and is one of the drivers why it's going down. I've got a few slides on the wastewater system and kind of similar information. So I'm going to keep going unless there's some questions, and maybe we pause when we get through with these. Very similar, you know, we looked at water accounts in this case, we're estimating and projecting wastewater accounts by meter size. But in general, you know, we've got many fewer wastewater accounts than water accounts in terms of that difference, about 5,000, about 20% less and pretty round numbers. Similar to water, the accounts and ultimately the EDUs factor in the analysis and in the fee setting that we go through.
Councilmember Rusin, a question?
Yeah, I just would like to go back to the Big Chino. So we were collecting diffs for the purchase of the ranch, but we're not collecting anything to get the water to Prescott or Prescott Valley. That doesn't make sense to me. Seems to me we should be better prepared.
You can't collect a development impact fee unless you have a project on your plan. And the water line for, from the Big Chino Water Ranch is not on the IIP. It would, the PV portion of it would never be on our IIP, that would be theirs. Again, this is the purchase of the ranch for our share of the purchase of the ranch, and this debt will be paid off in 2034.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much for that clarification.
One of the kind of key projects, and this affects as we go through the identification and sort of treatment plant capacity at the end of this 10-year period, the city has been pursuing and completing a series of projects that are centralizing sewer services. And ultimately, when those are done and as identified within this 10-year period, we'll go from having two plants to one plant that has sufficient capacity to treat wastewater for the entire community. And certainly, as we go through there, there's a series of investments the city has made and continues to make around this overall, you know, multi-year plan that was put in place some years ago. So as we look at that capacity, you know, through this process, and particularly for the impact fee, you know, we're essentially limiting ourselves to that seven and a half MGD. We've got 6.75 million gallons a day of treatment capacity today. And then at the completion of this 10-year period, we'll have one facility with 7.5 MGD of capacity. So this ends up, similarly, the treatment plant on the water side, this ends up being our kind of system limiter, is the ability to treat wastewater at the plant. In this case, well, plants, and then going to be one plant. This is a little bit the other way in terms of, you know, when we look at what we're getting at the plant in the previous study and the number of EDUs we had versus more recent information, you know, it kind of went the other way in terms of a higher amount of volume. And so that annual volume per EDU is up a bit. In this case, you know, it affects the, you know, overall kind of gallon per EDU when we look at that demand for an EDU and translating the cost into the fee assessment. There's a longer list of improvements that are IIP-eligible, similar kind of information, but just more projects, if you will, with wastewater, and we're identifying this, you know, certainly more detail on these within the documents themselves. It spills over into a second table. And in kind of a similar fashion, the percentages break out a little bit differently, but it's about a third of the projects are growth-related in terms of dollar amount, with about 2/3 of them being rate-funded or non-growth-related. And this is, you know, similar information just sort of depicted and showing, you know, it's not an equal amount each year, you know, it kind of ebbs and flows depending on the particular project and the timing.
Kathy, did you have a question?
Yes. While we're talking about rates, you know, we charge a 30% surcharge to deliver water outside the city limits. Or was there any thoughts about maybe increasing that since we're changing that?
That's the next presentation.
Okay, thank you. Just a question.
Well, I will cover that in the next presentation if you hold the question for then. In terms of the calculated fee, kind of running this through, the current fee for wastewater, it's a single service area. And again, for that base size meter, it's about $3,000. And the preliminary draft fee is coming back at a little over $5,800 or a change in $2,800 or so, as depicted here. And with the kind of preliminary fees for water system, the reduction in the water resource, and then the potential adjustment or increase in the wastewater fee, just kind of the utility side kind of flows through with that total for the base meter size in the top row, and then the current fees, again, for, you know, basically the same-sized meter across these three fee areas. So it certainly would be a change and, as depicted, that roughly $3,800 if these are the fees that get implemented or adopted. And just in terms of kind of going back to this timeline, the same slide that we saw before, just to, you know, the kind of formal public hearing steps and then some, how the statutory requirements and some of the action between now and potential ultimately vote this fall, as we continue through this process on potential changes to the impact fees that then would go into effect January 1 if adopted at that point. So that kind of runs the utility impact fee presentation, and certainly happy to answer questions or dive into the rate study as the final presentation.
Well, thank you, Andrew. These are kind of sobering numbers to see the vast amount of increase in fees to be able to keep up with growth and projected growth. And we're certainly seeing the impact of a number of years of very significant inflation and how it impacts our ability to maintain our infrastructure. So I know there's a lot of public comment about growth paying for growth. Well, this is the bill. So thank you for that. And we've got 20 minutes left for the next segment. So we appreciate, Andrew, your presentation, and we'll certainly take it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. So, you know, and this is somewhat intentionally structured where with utilities, we've got two primary revenue sources, monthly user charges and one-time development impact fees. So this gives us kind of that other side when we look at what the rate requirements are going to be. And they go a bit in parallel. Just a reminder for everybody is that your utility funds don't receive tax-based revenue. So, you know, we're not getting sales tax, we're not getting, you know, property taxes, it's fully rate and fee-based. And I also understand that we've got a little limited on the time available. So I'm going to kind of try and summarize these and certainly happy to answer questions or address things, hopefully I don't go too quickly. The overall objectives, and this affected kind of the key tasks within the evaluation. First and foremost, we looked at the multi-year financial plan out 10 years and evaluating how we're going to fund the needs and what was identified, projecting, you know, expenses, revenues, all of that, and essentially looking annually and making sure that we're covering enough and that, you know, at the end of the day, that we're exceeding our financial goals and having sufficient funds or how we fund projects, issuance of debt, and repayment of debt service that may come from that. The kind of second component is a class cost of service analysis. We've done this, you know, multiple times with the city, which is great, and communities that kind of keep rates in line with this class cost of service end up often seeing results that are consistent with what we're seeing, that there's not a lot of changes. It's largely the driver and kind of the overall revenue needs, and it's not as much, you know, different types of customers, commercial versus residential, and kind of one type of customer recovering more than what the cost is to serve them. And as part of this evaluation, we also looked at the multiplier that is currently 1.3 to see if that's still appropriate. And the last element was looking at rates and rate structure. So there's a couple of components. And studies in the past, we've looked at, you know, multiple alternatives as we did in 2019, as was implemented. And then we also developed five years of rate schedules for potential implementation. So we've accomplished both of those. And in this case, we're recommending maintaining the existing rate structure and don't have sort of an alternative or a set of alternatives with the goal of maintaining our conservation pricing signal and then adjusting rates in line with this future fiscal year 28, 29, our kind of fifth year, and where we're seeing the class cost of service. And so we're doing both of them at the same time. The overall kind of schedule, a little bit shorter, where there's a public hearing on rates two weeks from now with, excuse me, the outcomes of that would go into effect, the first rate adjustments July 1 of '24. And then, as we'll see in some of the later slides, we'll get back on a kind of January 1 effective date cycle 18 months later. So as we, you know, accomplish that first set of tasks and look out at the multi-year financial plan, I'm just, we're looking to accomplish three things. Fund our expenses and then exceed what's called a debt service coverage ratio requirement that it's a legal requirement of existing debt, and it's anticipated to be required moving forward. Where we've got a target we use for rate setting that's a little bit more conservative than, say, the legal minimum or the legal threshold. And lastly, minimum cash reserves that are based on days of O and M that vary for water and the sewer wastewater fund. And so as we went through this sort of pretty extensive process, is depicted here, there's a lot of variables, and, you know, we looked at some different alternatives, some different impacts, and ultimately landed on the base case or recommended plan. But just want to highlight, you know, certainly a lot of moving pieces when we look at all the factors and the elements of looking at user charges and rates. You know, as we looked at, you know, kind of what was causing or what was leading to some of the drivers, particularly in the near term, you know, as has been highlighted, you know, certainly the increased costs across the board affecting capital, affecting operation and maintenance, you know, chemical costs, power costs, pretty much everything, as well as higher interest rates and potential future borrowing costs as well. Certainly a significant driver while we continue to fund our repair and replacement needs and requirements, including a project that wasn't in the plan previously associated with PFOS mediation, as well as accelerating our meter replacement program. with PFOS mediation, as well as accelerating our meter replacement program as meters are kind of, you know, needing replacement a little bit faster than, than what the previous program anticipating. I'm accelerating that. And then just managing the overall cash flows and trying to do so in somewhat levelized manner while exceeding the financial planning metrics and, and our overall goals. So, you know, the, the kind of total projects and again, you know, capital for utilities can be a big driver. So this just highlights some of the more significant projects, you know, dollar amount, timing, and then what, what funding source we're anticipating using. Certainly more details on, on all of these and in, in the rate study that is Mark highlighted as, as online and available, the, the report available for, you know, certainly people to review and read. This information, you know, I'm kind of charting up those cash and capital requirements primarily through cash funded or debt funded, but in a few cases, we've obtained some grant funding that's helped reduce sort of the requirements that, that we've got from, from the other sort of funding sources. But primarily, it's a blend of, of cash and, and some debt in the water system. And in terms of the rate revenue increases, we're forecasting a 13% overall rate revenue adjustment to be effective July 1 of '24. And then as we're developing five years of schedules, this shows the overall percentage rate revenue increase is 11% in that second year. And then we fall to more of an inflationary adjustment of 2% a year for the next three years. I mean, ultimately what's driving this is the cash reserve target in that these upcoming two years, we're, we're kind of right down to what our minimum is, 90 days of O and M within our operating fund. And then it, it increases thereafter as, as we've completed a couple of big projects. The other driver that we look at in terms of debt service coverage against our target of a 1.5 or 150% of annual debt service isn't as much of a limiter, but certainly, you know, some, and then the water system certainly something for us to, to continue to keep our eyes on. So this identifies kind of the ultimately, you know, as we translate the rate revenue needs into annual user charges and fees, the, these were kind of the drivers, if you will, and, and some covering individual fees that, that we're assessing. So I'm going to talk through these, but you know, the, the first is the, the base service charge that we're applying and increase that's similar, the same percentage of the overall rate revenue needs. So as you see that percentage change, the fees that we have in place, the increase by meter size, proposing increase by 13% and, and, you know, see the percentages in subsequent years. Also indicated, and we've got this 18-month period after the initial rate increase, and then we get down to that January 1. There, there's another fixed fee that the city has increases by meter size that we're proposing to remain at this level. And this may be something that, that gets reviewed and potentially increased on a future rate study. But, but at least where we're looking at, we didn't see a, a need to, to adjust this element of the fixed charges, this, this aquifer protection fee. And then lastly, the balance of, of the volume rates. We've got different tiers for a single family and then multifamily, per multifamily dwelling unit, as well as non-residential. And as is footnote, the non-residential is, non-residential the kind of similar base meter size. It increases for larger meters, but the same tiered volume rates apply. You're just going to get more water as you've got a bigger connection, if you will. So this shows the, the volume rates by year again, current and then over this five-year period. And we're in line with class cost of service. We, we do have a couple other volume rates that, that are also highlighted on this chart for construction hydrant water as well as a dispensing station. And in interest of time, I'm going to get to wastewater and have a similar set of information. Similar drivers, you know, talked about the significant centralization project, you know, increasing costs and, you know, funding the overall plan and managing the, the cash flows throughout the, the multi-year period. Just some of the significant larger projects over the same 10-year time period are identified. Not all of them, but these are the ones with the larger dollar amounts. And then, you know, this, this information depicted in terms of whether it's grant, cash or debt funding sources that are anticipated to kind of fund this 10-year program. So the, the percentage increases with wastewater are a little bit higher. We're proposing 18%, followed by a 17% before we kind of fall down to, to a single-digit increases in, in the final year of 4%. So these are kind of the annual rate revenue adjustments, if you will. And the drivers for wastewater are a little more nuanced. We are, you know, getting to this cash target and this is influencing some of the capital funding choices or decisions. But it's not just sort of in that second year, it's also in that fifth year. And, and so that is one limitation. And then the other is, is we're looking to fund some of these needs in terms of the capital side. We're, we're also issuing some additional debt or projecting to issue debt. And so as we've got more debt until, you know, debt is paid off or retired, it puts more pressure on this debt service coverage. So again, this is sort of both cash reserves and coverage are, are driving the need to adjust the, the rates and the percentages by year that were indicated. Terms of the structures, muscle it's complicated. We've kind of consolidated things down to really only a couple of different types of customers. And, you know, as we're recommending, we kind of maintain the structures. We have it with an increase to one of the external customers, a septic hauling fees or rates that, that is factored in, is based on some analysis and, and evaluation completed by the city. So much, much less complicated, so much so we've got one slide. There's a monthly service charge or a fixed charge that's $21.50 and, and we're proposing to adjust that based on the percentages. And then the volume rate today, residential a little bit higher than non-residential. And we're, we're closing that gap over this five year period. So you'll notice that by the fifth year, those two are the same with the septic hauler being kind of the final rate or rate call out. So the last kind of piece just brings this together and, you know, let the, the charts and the information, the tables and the information kind of speak for themselves in the interest of time. We're showing two different non-residential users with different sized meters and kind of usage amounts for water and sewer and showing the bill today and, and then what that bill would go to under the proposed or projected rates by year. In this case, non-residential customer and then residential customer. And you'll see that the water use is, is more of an indoor amount, kind of a higher kind of middle amount. And then maybe a larger water user summer period of 25,000 gallons with the same amount of wastewater indoor sort of at that 3,000 level. This is just again, for illustration purposes, to, to bring both the proposed water and sewer rates together to, to a typical or, or in this case, different monthly bills for different types of residential users, all with the same meter size anticipated to be single-family residential. And kind of the last question that we're often asked is sort of how we compare. So this takes for 5,000 gallon water using 3,000 gallon sewer volume, single-family residential customer with the base meter size. The current rates that are in place for, starting with Prescott Valley all the way through Cottonwood, we're kind of in the middle of this group. And, you know, under the, the proposed rates, it could go into effect in July. We start to get to kind of the front end of it, you know, and, and these are always tricky. You know, we've got our system, we've got our costs, you know, there's, there's sort of some differences across communities, different age of the systems. But we know that this is a, you know, a question that we're often asked and how do we compare? So this tries, you know, as best we can to put the, the same sort of usage and, and type of a customer across multiple communities and, and show the city both currently and then under any proposed rates. So this is the last slide I had. And sorry to rush through it at the end, but I didn't want to run out of time. Lot of information at once across the three presentations. So I suspect there may be some questions or, you know, is something settle in? Just kind of going back to today was informational and, you know, certainly no action when, when it comes to the, the rate question and the immediate sort of, you know, request, public hearing in two weeks where, you know, there, there will be some action requested and, and effective date of those increases are anticipated to be July 1. Or the first set of them, I guess.
Well, again, thank you, Andrew. And I wish we had a little more time to go through these analyses and assumptions so we had a better understanding of what the impact is. But I think we've all seen the impact of inflation and higher labor costs and PFAs and all the other anticipated very high costs to be able to mitigate some of those concerns and put our whole system, wastewater, water, infrastructure in a position where we're going to be able to sustain our future demand. Do we have any public comment?
No.
All right. That will wrap up our study session here. Thank you again for all your work on this. And there'll be more, more to come as the public tries to digest these increases in their utility bills. So it's what, 2:58? We'll take about a 10-minute bio break. So we'll adjourn this meeting and we'll reconvene with the voting meeting at 3:05.